I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with all due justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments on agenda items this evening? You know, we have a lot of guests, so if you have a comment, feel free to stand up. And then if you're joining us virtually, please feel free to take one in the chat. Wait a second. Okay, there being no public comments, we will move on to presentations.
Well, good evening, everybody. We have a few very special presentations tonight. And I would like to start out by recognizing two phenomenal District 76 staff members. On behalf of the Board of Education and the District Leadership Team, I want to take this opportunity to share my gratitude and appreciation for our amazing district nurses, Julie Marques and Alyssa King. Julie and Alyssa will be recognized tomorrow at the Lake County Educator of the Year Celebration for their service, dedication, and leadership, being critical first responders in our schools. Julie has been with us for 14 years, and Alyssa joined the District 76 family just last year. Yet both of them triumphed in one of the most challenging times for our schools and communities. Each of them responded to student, staff, and family situations with patience, professionalism, and a positive attitude. We were able to keep schools open, students and staff healthy, and reassure our families that students were safe because of their skills, knowledge, communications, and talents. Both of them were critical in our handling of the pandemic and getting important information to and from our stakeholders while excelling in their daily responsibilities. They kept the leadership team informed, made personal connections and calls to families and staff, and were on the front lines responding to anything from a runny nose, temperature checks, to testing for COVID-19. They even volunteered their time to give vaccinations at the Lake County Vaccination Clinics. We could not have gotten through the pandemic without their leadership, service, dedication, and loyalty of these two amazing professionals. District 76 is fortunate to have you both as part of our team and our family. Julie and Alyssa, thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your excellence, efforts, energy, and sparkle. You are true diamonds. Thank you. Now, if you would come up, we have a little small token of our appreciation. Julie and Alyssa, please.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We cannot have done any of our jobs without all you guys. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I thought we were all done. It was all about me. No, it was, we have some Diamond Awards. All right, so I am going to call up our first nomination, Ms. Lauren Anderson, who would like to recognize one of her colleagues. And for those of you in the audience that may not know what a Diamond Award is, it's when a colleague, a staff member, administrator, or community member can nominate anyone on the District 76 team or family for going above and beyond their daily responsibilities and sparkling like a diamond. So, Ms. Anderson will be our first one.
All right, so Ami Malador is truly a shining diamond in our school. She always has a positive attitude, and she tackles the day with an open mind. What I love most about her is that she goes above and beyond to help other staff and students. When a special ed teacher was on leave, she helped service those students. She's constantly helping previous students she's had as they move on to the next grade level. She will wave, stop by to see them, or simply help them when needed. She also makes a very big effort to form a positive relationship with each student in her classroom. She gets to know them on a personal level so that she can figure out what will work for each individual child. Her creativity and personality helps the students stay regulated and ready to learn. She uses various techniques in her teaching and is willing to become flexible when things change in her day. She has helped me with visuals and accommodations for my students, and she's always willing to listen to a problem and help come up with a solution. She is a team player. She thinks all pre-K E C students are their students and treats all students with kindness and respect. Being a special education teacher, she has many dates and deadlines, and she's always organized and ready for all IEP meetings. She also has a wonderful relationship with all of her families. She keeps consistent communication with them through seesaw and phone calls so that periods are always aware of what is going on in her classroom and with their learning. Congratulations.
Ami, come on up.
Yeah, she's here.
I love your sparkle.
I know you did.
You, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, our next presenter this evening is Julie Marques.
Hi. I nominated Casey Lataille. Casey is part of our special ed team at West Oak Intermediate School. She is a shining example of patience and kindness. I see Casey every day when she escorts a student down for his medication. She is always positive and fun to talk to. She has a personal relationship with all of her students, including the students that moved on to West Oak Middle School. Those students continue to visit her throughout the year. Her students in the intermediate school love to engage in conversation with Ms. Lataille. She is a source of knowledge and comfort. She takes great pride in getting the most out of her students. I nominate Casey Lataille for the Diamond Award for going above and beyond for her students.
Because I love everybody so.
Congratulations. Our next presenter tonight will be Dr. Burr.
So I am excited to present tonight. I'm actually doing it in place of Jake Hackle. He could not be here with us tonight, but he has nominated the ever-popular, ever-wonderful Kara Kasek, better known as K2, over at DLS. And I would like to read Jake's nomination. He says Kara goes above and beyond to ensure a safe supportive environment for all students at DLS. She works in small groups with our students, provides instructional support, responds to crisis calls, and much more. Kara is a role model because of her character. She makes it clear that she will help other staff in any way possible in order to further help our students. Kara has led multiple initiatives throughout the year to help support students' SCL needs. For example, she has created visuals in our hallways with reminders about how to be kind. She also put up a mirror on one of these displays so that students can quite literally see themselves while processing the SCL support they are receiving. Kara runs our check-in and checkout program, which contributes to positive behavior in our school. It is wonderful to see how far our check-in, checkout students have come under the supervision of this program. Kara also provides teachers with support and resources for emotional regulation, such as visuals for the zones of regulation. I am constantly impressed by Kara's dedication to create a loving, kind environment for the students at our school. Not only does Kara have a vision and the tools to make this happen, but she also makes sure to share those things with other staff so that we can all contribute as well. Her creativity and innovation help make the curriculum accessible and fun for students while they are learning how to become kind members of the DLS community. Ladies and gentlemen, K2, the shining diamond.
And a little burger.
Ms. Kathy Adams.
Thank you. I just said I didn't write anything. So I just told Meg I didn't write anything, but apparently I did. I nominated Meg. I could have done this without writing anything because Meg is the star of her classroom. She provides every student with an opportunity to grow and to love music and to love coming back to music. The formal words are she not only expects excellence from her students, but from herself as well. She, we all need to take a day now and again, but she doesn't. She's always prepared. She always goes the extra mile to find activities that promote learning and the love of music in all students. She has students that come back and visit. I recently got to know a student that is now in fourth grade and not eligible for the ukulele club, and she comes now and volunteers to help every week. She's continually learning new methods and using technology and new ways to encourage her students to grow in their music knowledge and appreciation. I am proud to say that Meg Hagan is not only my friend, but she is a diamond at Diamond Lake School or Diamond West Oak Intermediate School. I spent 27 years at Diamond Lake. I can't, you know. Congratulations, Meg. You deserve it more than anybody.
Totally. No, congratulations. Thank you.
All right, we have one more formal presentation tonight, which is the Instructional Coaching Update and Dual Language Update. So Dr. Draga and his team are going to take over from here. And I ask, if possible, could the Diamond Award recipients, please hang on for a few minutes because we're going to do a group picture right after this presentation. Thank you.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity. This evening, myself and this wonderful group of instructional coaches and dual-language teachers are going to take just a few moments to present an update in our Instructional Coaching Program and also our Dual Language Program. To start, I guess, we'll do introductions and maybe just tell your position and where you're at and what your current, your current role is. Waiting for the mean mug.
I am Julie Pecoraro, and I'm the Instructional Coach at West Oak Middle School.
Hi, I'm Sharon Tweed, and I am the K5 Literacy Coach, so I am at Diamond Lake and Intermediate School.
I am Diane Bischoff. I am the Instructional Technology Coach at Diamond Lake School. I am also the Makerspace Teacher for STEAM Education. I'm also representing Tyler Smith, who could not be here this evening.
I am Rachel Johnson. I'm second grade dual language.
And I'm Lizzie Duffy. I'm the Dual Language Reading Interventionist at Diamond Lake.
Thank you. So I'll just start by sharing a little bit about what our intentional outcomes are for our Instructional Coaching Program. And then our Instructional Coaches will offer some other information related to the activities and the focus that we've had in our Instructional Coaching Program. But largely, the Instructional Coaching Program is designed to improve student outcomes, improve instructional practice. The Instructional Coaching Program is really designed to improve a culture of collaboration among teachers so that they become reflective practitioners and examine their own roles and responsibilities and support trustful, respectful collegial relationships. Additionally, it's, the Instructional Coaching Program is designed to focus on student data and then utilizing that data to improve instruction and then to increase the knowledge, skills, and capacities of our Diamond Lake staff. So Julie will share next as she covers the, what our focus is for instructional coaching, and then we'll talk about some of the activities.
So the focus that Sharon and I have been working on this year with instruction is to strengthen the balanced literacy model, build the communication arts writing curriculum at the middle school level, design culturally responsive curriculum across content areas, design interdisciplinary units while also supporting our RTI process with our level literacy interventions.
And in terms of the Instructional Technology Department, Tyler and I focus mostly, focus mostly on building technical capacity for our staff and students, you know, using our technology tools and their purpose in our lives, substituting, augmenting, modifying, and redefining curriculum with technology, also otherwise known as the SAMR model, amplifying student voice, giving students the opportunity to engage in their learning and amplify what their voice looks like in their learning, continuing growth in our one-to-one model and what this looks like in a post-quarantine world. And then accessibility, using technology as a resource to differentiate the needs of our students and what that looks like for all of the various needs that we see in our district.
Some of the things that we've done to support those focus areas for the literacy side of the coaching world, we have supported teachers with the new guided reading materials and the word study pilot materials that have been going on at Diamond Lake as well as Intermediate School. We have modeled lessons and participated in coaching cycles. We've worked with teams to aid in curriculum development. And we have also facilitated DAD and PLC meetings to help identify areas of strength and areas in need of focus or more community conversations about within our schools. We've also focused on embedding reading into the content areas, especially Julie at the middle school. It's been really cool to see them infuse reading into science and social studies with novels. We've also worked to identify more resources that are culturally responsive, support our balanced literacy model, and will best meet the needs of our students. And one of the more exciting, well, it's all exciting, don't get me wrong, but an exciting thing we did was created a special event called D76 Loves to Read in the month of February to promote a community of readers within our district.
In the world of instructional technology, a lot of the activities we engage in are very similar to what the literacy coaches have been doing in helping run our data and PLC meetings and leading professional development with all of our teachers. We also model lessons and engage in coaching cycles. Where it gets more specific into technology is training on our learning platform, seesaw at Diamond Lake School, and then Google Classroom over at the West Oak Campus. We focus on how technology can be effectively embedded into content areas. For example, I've been working with our Diamond Lake teachers on using an app called Book Crater that allows students to create and edit and publish their writing into a digital format. Tyler asked me to share that he is also working with his West Oak teachers on co-teaching projects such as research projects and device usage. He's doing some lessons with the upper grades on social media etiquette as well. And as you can see on our side, we have lots of other things that we engage in, including supporting and designing projects-based lesson and piloting resources for our teachers.
So in early April, then we provided the staff with the Instructional Coaching Survey and just to get some feedback to help guide our future improvement plans. And so we saw that many of our teachers were engaged in the Instructional Coaching Program from the lens of small group professional development, large group professional development, doing a lot of work around data meetings and curricular development. They've been receiving resource support from our instructional coaches and support in terms of instructional planning and instructional practice support. The survey also gave us an indication as to how often per month teachers were interacting with the instructional coaches. And so you can see as the data suggests that teachers at about 62% are meeting with instructional coaches one to five times per month. At the rate of six to 10 times per month, about 24% of our teachers are engaged. And 15 to 20 times per month, about 12% of our teachers are engaged. And so we utilize this data to drive our future improvement plans. And if you wouldn't mind switching then to the last slide. This one, yeah. It kind of gives us a moment to focus on what it is we're seeking to do in the 2223 school year. And so as we looked at that previous data, one of the things we recognized is that we want to create an intersection between our new teachers and our new staff to improve and increase the number of coaching cycles that will take place for our new staff to support, you know, not only our new teachers, but our new teacher mentor program. So we recognized that based on the data that we found that we have some opportunities for growth in that area. But continuing then into 2223, we recognize that we want to continue our work, especially with Julie and Sharon, to strengthen our K through five writing curriculum. So we're going to continue that work next year and begin piloting a couple of writing programs to make a suggestion for 2324. We're continuing to focus on our balanced literacy model and ensure that our teachers are strong in their understanding of the practice of balanced literacy, the balanced literacy model and the components that are involved in that, in that model. And then one of the things that I think our instructional coaches have done a phenomenal job of this year is developing our PLC practices, our professional learning community practices, which really takes a look at what we expect kids to know, the data and the information behind whether kids are reaching those targets and then what types of things we can do to help improve that. So that's from the literacy side. And then from the instructional technology side, you know, Diane and Tyler want to continue focusing on strengthening student voice and giving choice and opportunities, ensuring that our staff has the technical capacities and proficiencies in the areas of instructional technology and to, again, support our professional learning community practices. So that brings just this portion of the presentation to a conclusion. And I wanted to know if there are any questions that you may have for the four of us. Please. Sure.
And it looked like there's a big difference between the activities that we're involved in at Diamond Lake School and at Alyssa. So I don't know if that, I mean, obviously the staff size. But I did know if one, stuff we're going to be taking next year, maybe increase those numbers? And/or if two, in looking at kind of response here, the activities offered, like.
Yeah, and I think that's a great observation and question. And to your point, looking at this data, it's slightly skewed in that at West Oak Campus, we have, you know, a full-time Julie, a full-time Sharon, and a full-time Tyler. Whereas at the primary building, we have a part-time Diane and a, you know, a full-time Sharon. So with, as you guys had approved the last board meeting, the inclusion of a K through five math coach, I think we'll see that there's more focus given to instructional coaching, allowing that additional staff member. But also going back to what you were mentioning there, I think that there's going to be, there will be a focus on the types of activities. And the top two, which I think are lacking, and we've had this conversation among us, is just the coaching cycles and the co-teaching opportunities. And we really want to take an opportunity, as mentioning earlier, of that intersection between our new teacher mentor program. And we will have several new teachers next year, and then also the new staff this year offers us about 20% of our staff will be in those first couple of years. So we want to make sure we're utilizing our instructional coaches to kind of, you know, to marry our instructional coaching program to our new teacher mentoring program and get the best thing for our buck in that regard.
As a follow-up, do you do like satisfaction surveys when you're done interacting with the staff? I mean, in looking at that diagram, which basically is talking about seeking support, I don't think we would see numbers like that if people weren't satisfied. But I'm just wondering how you want to seek out feedback after.
Yeah, and I know, if I remember correctly, part of our staff support survey did relate to the Instructional Coaching Program. I don't have that data in front of me, but we did make sure that we, we ensured that the relationship between our instructional coaches was linked to our staff support survey. So.
We do that in our PLC meetings to have reflective conversations and, you know, ask little survey questions and stuff like that. What else do you need from us and the support that we give them too?
All right, then. The next portion of our presentation relates to the Dual Language Program. And so in the Dual Language Program update, we're just going to give a brief summary of what our focus areas were this year, some of our strengths and our challenges, and then conclude with some of our future focus as we move into next school year. So, Lizzie, if you want to go ahead and take it away.
Okay, so for 2021, 2022, our focus has been identifying and using new Spanish language arts resources, developing and using those resources to develop our K to five Spanish language arts curriculum, our roadmaps, building Spanish intervention support, having myself as well as Nambo in the, at the West Oak Campus and using the data from F and P to drive our instruction as well as identify students who need that extra support.
All right, next slide.
I'm going to talk about some of the strengths and challenges that we have. So some of our strengths include we have a strong leadership team of dedicated Spanish language arts teachers. We have some new Spanish language arts supports, resources, and those resources help us support our curriculum development and instruction. We have Spanish intervention, which has, it takes an RTI approach to dual language. Some of our challenges are just finding qualified bilingual staff and then also making sure that our standardized assessments are aligned to our Spanish language arts standards.
And so as we, as we round out our school year, it is going to be our continued focus to complete the Spanish language arts curricular maps and the learning frameworks aligned with the authentic Spanish language arts resources. And while this may be seemingly simple, recognizing that in the, in the world of dual language, it has been a challenge to find quality resources. It's not like English language arts where there is just a menu of options available to, to teachers and to schools and to programs. So we've done, that leadership team that was mentioned earlier as one of our strengths has done a nice job of digging in, looking at resources, examining resources, making suggestions, and then bringing forth recommendations to myself and to the district. bringing forth recommendations to myself and to the district leadership, leadership team. So we will, we will continue that work and that focus in next school year. And we're going to continue to work hard to staff our dual language position with high quality dual language staff. That's a heck of a lot easier said than done. And so if I if I'm just being honest with you, dual language staffing is a challenge. And so we've made several efforts this year. We've gone to several job fairs. We even went as far as to take screenshots of some of the graduating classes of some of the local universities. And then look up those individuals online to ensure if they have appropriate certification through the Illinois State Licensor Board and so on and so forth. So we've we've done some we've done some vetting and we've we've really sought out the opportunity to fill some of our our positions. We hope that in the next month or two, we will have any of our vacancies filled. All right, and then we we really, you know, we want to strengthen our the utilization of our assessment platform. And so, you know, Lizzie knows so well about the importance of good assessment and using the F and P assessments in Spanish to help drive our program and to to be able to gauge student growth. And so I think while we may not be sharing that data at this meeting down the road, you know, Lizzie will share a little bit of what she's been able to do with Mrs. Nambo this year in terms of the F and P student scores in Spanish and an opportunity to see to see that growth. And then at the middle school. Believe Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Peterson will be sharing the apple assessment results probably with report cards. Those will go home with families at the end of the year. So you kind of get a gauge as to, you know, where kids are at with that. So that concludes the dual language portion of tonight's programming. Are there any questions that you might have for us? Yeah, absolutely. And the acknowledgement really goes to the teaching staff. They have been just a dedicated group of individuals who share the importance of the culture, the language, the identity of kids. And it's been, it's been a very, very special experience and a great group of people to be working with. I hear you. Right now, the apple assessment just really serves partly as a placement and then as a gauge. The F and P is probably the the best the best assessment, I would say, that we probably have at this point to gauge reading growth in Spanish language arts. The other thing that, you know, Lizzie suggested was us maybe revisiting, Star has a Spanish assessment. But we've had some, again, I should probably, you know, step aside on this one, but I know that it's it presents some challenges in terms of maybe its authenticity. And when we first piloted it, it wasn't, it wasn't seen as a a reliable indicator of student data. With that said, recognizing that there isn't this fantastic menu of options for us, we might just lean back on it again and see where where it takes us and kind of do a little trial and error on that. I think that would be really the the largest extent of our assessment, you know, platform for for next year. Of course. Oh, I'm sorry.
So on that note, just you all speaking about how you've seen the dual language program. Grow and get stronger, you know, the past few years. The dual language leadership team would like to nominate Dr. Draca for a Diamond Award. I mean, really, so I have something written, but really like Steve is the driving force behind so much of the work we've done. He has been so supportive of us. So I'm I'm just going to read my little, my little little writing that I did. I had to chop it up a lot, so it might not, it's not going to capture everything amazing about Steve, but so if you ever ask Steve how he's doing, his response usually is just live in the dream. Steve's been our assistant superintendent in D seventy six for seven years. Among Dr. Drac's many accomplishments, he's about to publish the book Lead With Love. Inspiration for his book title is apparent in his daily interactions. So before Steve came to D seventy six, there were no teams. We had dedicated members of the staff from three buildings, but we lacked cohesion. Steve leads numerous teams. I can't, I couldn't even count after I asked him, like, how many teams do you lead? And I was like, I lost count. Leads numerous teams of staff members who collaborate and support one another. These small teams together are the fundamental cohesion that make up what we now call our D seventy six family. Steve's words and ours as well. We, meaning the dual language leadership team, we have a few members in the or the dualees, as Steve affectionately calls us. Regularly get to meet with Steve as he guides us in grade level pairs and as an entire team at least once a month. More often than that, we we bother Steve or like, Steve, can we meet? We got to talk about something. Through Steve's leadership, we've transitioned into twelve individual dedicated dual language teachers into a cohesive unit who truly work as a team. It's clear that Steve practices what he preaches. He leads with love. The dual language leadership team would like to say thank you, Steve, for truly being a shining diamond. Keep living the dream, Steve. We're so grateful to be a part of it.
Thank you. That's very sweet of you. I really appreciate that. Finally. Thank you so much. Among the DLT members, we all give each other a hard time about the Diamond Award. So it's kind of just but thank you so much. Now I know why you asked me some of those questions. It's all coming together. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. I really, really appreciate that. It's always been such a pleasure. You know, it's always a pleasure working with you guys. We have a great time together. We solve a lot of, you know, problems and we have some fun along the way. So it's it's really awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you and congratulations, everyone. Okay, we will move on to our business agenda. A little bit less fun. I know, I'm sorry. We do have a like a very engaging presentation on lawn care and custodial services and Eric's dream garage coming up, so. So just just hold on to the edge of your seat. It's going to get more exciting. Still time, run down to your office. Okay, um, so the first, we have like five items up for review. The first is on the sort of agenda. We'll go down that at the next meeting. Second item, not to steal Eric's thunder, is the maintenance facility contract. And the bid review. So I don't know if you want to.
Let her out of my pocket and throw it around everywhere. That's the smoke and mirrors right there. So I just wanted to briefly touch on each of these topics. I'll just kind of do it all at once if you guys would prefer or do you? Okay, so we had many bid openings last week. And so we've been kind of rapid firing, trying to get all these in and for the board to review. So the first item is the maintenance storage facility. So just to remind you, we have five hundred thousand dollars in S R three allocated to this project if you approve it. And we had several alternates just based on our our bid specs. When we were originally drawing this up, this project was coming in at around seven hundred and thirty to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, depending on all the alternates that were available. So when we received our bid, we were very pleasantly surprised. There was about thirty to thirty five percent under budget. So with the base bid at coming in at four hundred and forty three thousand and all the alternates that we would have preferred in a perfect scenario, we're still at five hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for the cost of the project. Which is, as you can see with the memo there, it's seven hundred and thirty thousand was the budget that we had established for that. That's actually low. That was, that didn't include all the alternates. So as a reminder, the fees, testing and printing that's listed on the memo, we've already incurred all those costs. We probably have one or two receipts that are coming in, but that was the design cost of the project. And the contingency, we don't believe it's necessary based on the project scope. But if there was a contingency with this project, we'd bring it to the board to prove any change orders that might take place. So are there any questions about the project itself? Yeah, so we wanted to get this building as big as possible. So just replacing the garage with the leg size. You know, just a bigger footprint of the building wasn't as appealing to us. So we want to add a second level to us. So the mezzanine large footprint on the bottom floor, the mezzanine covers roughly half of it, but it adds a second floor. And that could serve as an office space, additional storage, things like that. So we just want to add a second story to that building. Okay, and we were very pleasantly surprised as well. We had ten bidders for this project, which is kind of unheard of for us. So we we Tor is the lowest bidder for this project. Okay, number two is the custodial or no, the yeah, custodial service contract. So our contract with Citywide expires on June thirtieth of this year. And we went out to bid. And again, we're very pleasantly surprised with the amount of bids we received. So all in all, I believe we had nine companies, yeah, that came out the bid opening. Very nice to have a lot of competition in terms of the custodial vendors. And we set a level playing field with setting a minimum price. We have to get ahead of the minimum wage increase that's going to be coming pretty soon. So we, I attached one of the things you can click on the memo is a little bit more of our bid analysis that we put together that has the three year costs. So that's where we're going off of in terms of this total contract. We were evaluating it both on costs is the first driver and then the reference checks and past experience with a lot of these vendors. So while G S F is the fourth lowest bidder on the list, they have the the greatest reputation by far in terms of both District Seventy Five and One Twenty use them. We've discussed going out to joint bid several times for custodial contracts. And, you know, with G S F going out to bid, they provide us even a lower number than we would have anticipated doing a a conjoined contract with these other districts. So they have an excellent reputation and they provide a you know, all new equipment for other contracts. They're very professional outfit. Everyone's uniformed. And they do a large investment in terms of their chemical program. That's their kind of their trademark in terms of their their the products that they use. And we'd be able to tap in a larger employment base by having three large contracts in the area. So if there's we're going to have a lot of cross training in between the other two districts as well. So while they're not the lowest, they're the only other provider that we considered was the third lowest bidder. And, you know, after doing the references and evaluating the cost increase, it's only going to be roughly a four thousand dollar increase per year for G S F. And there's a three percent increase for each year as part of the contract. Any questions about that? They do. And the two of them have extensions already in place. So they've had them for several years. I know One Twenty still has another year left on their contract, but you know, they're anticipating either going out to bid or doing an extension with them. Okay, and then lawn care, lawn care was kind of the opposite to the first two I talked about that we only had two bidders, which I was really surprised on. And because of that, we were able to talk to our our law firm. We did this a few years ago where if you are able to negotiate the same costs as part of your contract, you can continue on without going out to bid. So it's above our bidding threshold of twenty five thousand dollars. But because they're keeping the cost the same, we could enter into a one year extension on those terms. So we anticipate countryside's been great for us. We're able to save money based on our two bids. It's about ten thousand dollars cheaper than our two bids. And we can we can go out to bid again next year and hopefully get a lot more competitive bids. So that's fairly easy one for us. They've done a fantastic job and they have really good communication with Chris and I. Any question about that? What I speculated is with custodial and the maintenance contracts, there's a large portal that contractors kind of tap into. Whereas lawn care, you're kind of going what's in the paper, what we post in the paper and on our website. So it might have been a not that good of a job of advertising on our end, but it's kind of a lesson learned that the last time we did it, we didn't have this problem because word of mouth spreads. And there's a large amount of competition in the area. So next year, I am glad that the countryside agreed to keep the contract the same, which is great. But next year, we'll at least push this out a little bit more and do a little more advertising. Good question, though. Last is the health insurance renewal rates. So we received our renewal rates just a few weeks ago. And I have met with our insurance committee meeting, which is made up of a few teachers and went through our our the memo and analysis as far as what our rates are going to increase. We had a really good claims history this year. And we walk through each of those components of it. So there's a different like RX and medical trend that they'll look at. Our biggest increase right now is medical, is prescription costs. Those are going up about eight percent each year. And our biggest heavy hitters are all made up of RX claims. So as part of our district, we are part of a six district co-op called Lake Region Benefit Co-op. And what they do is they have certain pooling amounts that if it's over fifty thousand dollars, all the districts share that risk. That's one of the benefits of being part of a co-op is this risk sharing. And so our our four claims that we have that are all over that fifty thousand dollars are made up of heavy RX costs. So without that, our medical trend is has been really great, less than three percent. So when going through our analysis, we really look at making and managing our reserve level, making sure we can use those few reserves to buy down future costs. So while our our medical, you know, went up less than three percent, our our X is around eight, we average it out to about a five percent increase to our medical costs next year. And that allows us to build up our margin for reserve to about a sixty to ninety day level. That's our build up our margin for reserve to about a 60 to 90 day level. That's our main goal. And teachers, their benefits are going up 8% next year as part of the contract. So for teachers, they save 3% is kind of the net that, that employees are going to have. So in the end, it's kind of a win-win for everybody. We build up our reserves. Everyone goes, has a 3% reduction cost next year. And then for dental, we were able to keep those costs at a 0% increase. Just because the, the claims have been very well with that and dental, dental insurance hasn't improved in like 20 years. So it's not, we, we felt it was an advantageous level for people already. And any questions about that? I will need some board representation next year on our insurance committee meeting. So I will draw hats, draw straws out of a hat and see who wins that one. I'm looking at you, Joe. I'm going to put four names in the hat for that one. All right. Thank you.
And we just have one item up for action this evening and that is a personnel item. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake, some of these support of education, accepts and approves of personnel items on the agenda. We have two resignations and we have one just informational position. We have a motion to approve these. That concludes our business agenda for the evening. And now we will move on to board discussion. And there's a couple of things for board discussion tonight. The first one is the school board governance recommendation application. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look, but we also were emailed this a couple of weeks ago. Essentially it's something I think that our board should look into applying for, for next year. Currently, if you kind of go through the preview of the application, I think we're really solid in the majority of the areas, but I think if we focus on doing a little bit of additional outside training. So I just wanted to commit that and make you guys aware of it and see if anyone had any questions or any thoughts about it. You just want to take some time to the desk, think about it. Yeah. I don't need to put you on the side. Along those lines, I, like I told you in our last meeting, I reached out to I A S B about the D E I training and they got back to me instead of they have June 13th. And so I wanted to get those on your radar and see if you guys could let me know. You don't have to let me know tonight, but I'll send out a reminder email and just let me know if you're available. They did say it usually takes about two and a half hours. Which is why I didn't really want to carry it with the board meeting. And the whole process is pretty. So if you could just let me know if you're available, either of those dates. June 13th and 15th. And if not, we can send it back to them. I told them that I thought July was not the best month. We can certainly look for a different date or three. Let me know. It would probably be in the evening, like maybe five, six o'clock here or five thirty. That is it for board discussion. And we did not have any freedom of information off us. Under notices and communications, we have as always the board meeting calendar, we have the April Diamond Edge. Sure, they'll come out from the presentation. Okay, then we now move on to public comments and petitions on non agenda items. Do we have any public comments on non agenda items? Again, if you have a comment, you're joining us virtually, please feel free to type that into the chat box and we'll be ready to meet in. Not look like we have any public comments. Moving on to others. Does anyone have anything for others this evening? Okay, then we will adjourn to executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. And for the purchase or lease of rent of real property for the use of the district, including meetings held for the purpose of discussion, whether a particular parcel should be acquired. And for the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the district. We have a motion to adjourn to executive session.